Good morning, everyone. Be calling this Board of Commissioners's regular meeting for May 2025 to order. If you can, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and Salute to the State Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our supreme. Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, and to the awesome and wonderful American culture.
Next item on the agenda is going to be approval of the regular meeting agenda.
Sub motion.
Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Shelley. Do we have any discussion? See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Public input. Do we have anyone for public input? No public input. Okay, thank you. Moving on. Moving on to, uh, public hearing. Under item A, open public hearing and discussion to determine if firework restrictions should be imposed within the unincorporated portions of Grant County due to the extreme or severe drought conditions. Do I have a motion to go into a public hearing?
Sub motion. Second.
Sub motion by Commissioner Florida, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are in a public hearing. Do we have anyone that will be testifying to this? Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion. Second.
Sub motion by Commissioner Florida, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion?
Okay, why do you agree? Did you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
It's what?
Doctor.
So, where was I? Do we have any discussion to close the hearing? Okay, see none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Moving on to proclamations. Uh, proclamation for declaring extreme and severe drought conditions in Grant County and, um, imposing of fireworks restrictions. Do you have anything to say, or?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just reiterate what I reported to you on Tuesday. The majority of Grant County is still in exceptional drought conditions and in staff's recommendation to continue to impose fireworks restrictions countywide.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about the actual proclamation or the... Yeah, proclamation.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering why we have section three. It sort of... Section two says we're not allowing the use of fireworks and then section three opens it up and... Why is that in there?
There, do you want to?
Opens it up with restricted use?
Sticker on the wall.
It's the statute.
And it looks like it's pretty, uh, wide open of what's allowed there.
So, we do have to comply with what statute allows and so that language is consistent with state statute. Ben can elaborate further.
Commissioner, the, uh, the statute has a list of exemptions in F-2A that unfortunately any counties and municipalities do not have authority to prohibit or ban those. Um, it's just the way that the legislative process worked to draft that particular statute. Um, and so there was a carve-out for those particular types of fireworks.
Okay.
But we can bound the ones that are in section two, but we cannot bound the ones in section three.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shelley. Do we have a motion?
Sub motion.
Second.
Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens. Do we have any discussion or further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to proclamations. First proclamation that we have is National Emergency Medical Services Week. I'm going to turn C, D, and E to my vice chair, Mr. Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a commission, we request to, um, recognize the National EMS Week, National Hospital Week, and National Nurses Week. Um, so I'll be reading the proclamation for the National EMS Week and Ms. McDonald will be reading the other two. So, County of Grant proclamation, Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams with a career volunteer engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through May 23rd, 2025 to be declared as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation presented.
Paul, second.
Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens. Do we have any discussion? See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries.
We got a picture with it? Can we please get the EMS providers up for a quick photo? Anybody EMS, fire EMS, um, air services, whoever it is. Are they going to put Hospital Week and Nurses Week together for the photo?
Mm-hmm.
Hospital Week and Nurses Week and Hospital Week together.
Show bro.
Right. Mr. Chair, the next, um, proclamation will be, recognized will be the National Nurses Week. Will be presented by Ms. McDonald.
Whereas nurses are the cornerstone of our healthcare system, providing compassionate, evidence-based, and skilled care to patients in every stage of life. And whereas the nurses at Gila Regional Medical Center and throughout Gount County are dedicated professionals who serve with integrity, resilience, and unwavering commitment to the well-being of our community. Whereas the theme of National Nurses Week 2025, Nurses Make the Difference, highlights the critical role nurses play in improving health outcomes, advocating for patients, and leading in times of both crisis and calm. And whereas nurses have demonstrated extraordinary leadership and perseverance, particularly in times of great challenge, and continue to innovate, educate, and elevate the standards of care in our region. And whereas Gila Regional Medical Center is proud to recognize the courage, compassion, and clinical excellence of our nursing staff who serve not just as caregivers, but as teachers, healers, and patient advocates every day. Now therefore, the Grant County Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through May 12th, 2025 as National Nurses Week. Let this be a time for all of us, patients, families, colleagues, and community members, to extend our heartfelt appreciation to the nurses who strengthen and sustain the health of our county. County of Grant proclamation, National Hospital Week. Whereas hospitals are the cornerstone of health in our communities, providing compassionate, comprehensive care, and serving as a beacon of hope and healing for all. And whereas Gila Regional Medical Center proudly fulfills its mission of providing exceptional quality, patient-centered care in healing environments, delivering outstanding medical services to the people of Gount County and surrounding regions. And whereas the strength of Gila Regional Medical Center lies in the dedication and professionalism of its entire staff, physicians, nurses, caregivers, support personnel, and administrative teams embody the hospital's core eye-care values: integrity, compassion, accountability, respect, and excellence. And whereas these values guide every action and interaction with the hospital, creating a culture of trust, empathy, responsibility, dignity, and continuous improvement in the pursuit of exceptional healthcare. And whereas during National Hospital Week, we recognize and celebrate the countless contributions made by healthcare workers who go above and beyond to ensure that patients receive the highest standard of care in healing environments. And whereas it is fitting that we honor and thank the team at Gila Regional Medical Center for their tireless efforts, especially in times of challenge, and for being steadfast pillars of health and humanity in our community. Now therefore, the Grant County Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through May 16th, 2025 as National Hospital Week. And encourage all residents and community members to express their appreciation for the hospital's dedicated professionals and to recognize the vital role they play in keeping our region healthy, strong, and supported.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve both proclamations as presented.
Second. Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Florida. Discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just want to make my comments. I was going to say some of my comments for commissioners' reports, but before, uh, all these fire people leave, before that happens at the end of our meeting, I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Medina for the proclamations presented before us and... For me, uh, this is very near and dear to my heart. I want everybody here in the room, especially in the room to hear this and those that have helped me beyond the room. I, for one, have always taken the medical personnel for granted in the fact that you get sick, go to the doctor, and they give you medicine, and you move on. And I think until you've been in a, in a crisis, a life or death crisis, which, which, which I have been, and I'm not afraid to say that, but I've gone to Gila Regional, I've been in Las Cruces, and most of my time I spent at the Mayo during my, my last few years when, um... I guess you could total about four months that I've stayed at the Mayo, 30 days in the ICU. And until then, even when the EMS personnel picked me up, uh, in Scottsdale one time after an issue and took me back to the hospital, I didn't really appreciate the calling of, of these, uh, these people to their profession. Everyone from the custodian at the Mayo all the way up to the surgeons played an integral part in my healing. A custodian will walk in and tell me that he's praying for me and visit with me and talk to me and I just appreciated that, all the way to a team of doctors, but especially the nurses. The nurses, um, you know, I would, I would, they would find out who I was and what my background was. And every day they'd come in and, "A new nurse," and "Thank you for your service," they'd tell me. And I would always tell them, "No, thank you for your service. You guys are my heroes." Firemen think that they're the heroes of policemen, which really isn't true, Commissioner Medina. Sometimes. Sorry, I'm not supposed to say between me and you, sir. But truly, the medical personnel, especially the nurses, are my heroes. And I want you guys to hear that from someone that's been in a, in a situation where I've been totally helpless and the kindness and the empathy and the caring, um... Especially after being where you have to 30 days in the ICU and they're feeding you and nothing phases them. I mean, you could throw up in front of them and they act like if nothing ever happened. Even here at the emergency room at Gila Regional, um, they've helped me, my family, my mom, my dad. And my mom and dad, when they've gone in, I'm sure a lot of people know my mom and dad. Uh, they've passed away, but I just think, man, these folks are getting tired of seeing my parents, but every time they treated them with care and dignity, which really meant a lot to me. IV techs I see sitting in the room, they help me still and they treat me professionally and courtesy and friendly. And I want you guys to know that that does not go unnoticed. Not just by me, but by everybody that you serve within Grant County or outside of Grant County. And I, for one, on behalf of myself, my family, we, I can't say how much I appreciate you, your service, your calling, your dedication, and your passion to what you do. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have anything else, Commissioners? Appreciate every one of you other for what you do, so thank you. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, can we get the rest of the group, the nurses and Hospital Week people, for a photo opportunity? Thanks, sir. You guys, please come up.
Going to need a few rows.
Going to need a few rows for this one.
Did you give me a name?
Yeah.
Thank you. Did you forward it?
Yeah.
Thank you. I didn't think so. Okay, moving on to, uh, next item of the agenda will be, uh, fiscal year 2024 financial audit report. Thank you, Commissioner Medina.
Thanks, sir.
Who's the one doing the report? Mr. Veneer, whenever you're ready, you can go ahead, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, um, I can go ahead and share our, uh, presentation for the public of report on the audit. And, uh, go. Oh, um, I'm getting the request to share. Someone has to give me access. All right, uh, we have our, our public presentation here. I think we can go through this. Uh, we keep it fairly brief and, uh, we just talk about the results of the 2024 audit. And, uh, what we have here, we just explained our scope of the work. We, uh, our job is to give an opinion on the financial statements, also opinion on the major federal programs. And in addition, there are state audit rule compliance testing that, um, is, that is required. Apart from those opinions and that state audit rule, we, uh, do what's called non-attest work, which is putting together the financial statements and no disclosures. And, uh, moving on here, we just talked about the results of the audit, so the opinion, uh, the financial statement, unmodified opinion, which is, uh, uh, the terminology that says we believe the numbers that are being presented in the report are materially correct, so, uh, basically, which is what we say is clean opinion. Federal awards, uh, that is a, uh, there's two opinions there. Because you have three major federal programs, um, there is a qualification on one of the programs, uh, on one of the compliance requirements. So, in other words, um, there was not compliance on one of the programs. And then, moving on, we have a summary of the findings. And, uh, so we start out with the prior year findings. And, uh, walk through that first. We have what's listed here, uh, findings that are resolved. And so, going through that, uh, reporting of the government fund, proprietary fund that issue have been resolved, improper accruals have been resolved, prepaid assets, procurement of small purchases, the environment, uh, related to the, this is related to a federal program, the rural area tribal transit program, uh, cash management control, allocable costs related to compensation, budget adjustments, and late audit report, uh, submittal. All of those are reported as, um, resolved. And then moving on to the findings that repeated, uh, cash or controls over cash balances, inaccurate scheduled expenditures of federal awards, controls over journal entries, controls over capital assets, inadequate policy procedures under uniform guidance, uh, suspension of department, uh, equipment and real property management, data collection form submission, cash appropriations, in excess of available cash balance, budgetary compliance, travel per DM, conflict of interest, late audit report, the middle, financial close, or, or, financial close and federal reporting. Those are two, the new findings. So, all of those are, uh, repeated findings and the last two are, are just new, uh, findings. Uh, let's see here. We're on... Almost done. There's a few more findings. Uh, the accounting and control of capital assets, adjusted journal entry reconciliations, preparation of the, of the scheduled expenditures of federal awards and the actual expenses exceeding budgeted. Those findings, uh, uh, those are all prior year findings as well, and they have repeated. So, uh, quite a few findings there and, uh, the positive note is to see that several have been resolved. Uh, because there was a, because the audit was delayed in 2023, didn't get issued till around, I think approximately September of 2024, that makes it very difficult to resolve findings because, um, corrective action plan, yeah, it's hard to, to make corrective action plans when you're, when you're not really given the information from the auditors to do so. So, um... So, let's see, you are now on track for your audit because this audit was submitted March 31st to the state audit office. And of course, it is released, so we're doing this public presentation. So, you are ready for your 2025 audit, which, uh, is, is about, uh, we're, we're coming up on June 30th. Um, so that's all the findings. That's the, the, and then, which, the last thing I'm, uh, noting here is the, uh, there's this new accounting standard called GATV. And, uh, so that's related to compensated absences, which is the one where it will impact all organizations that have vacation accruals, sick leave accruals. So, the, the methodology, the way you measure that liability is different now and in the... You'll probably expect to be a larger liability. Uh, the certain risk disclosures, that's also going to be implemented this year. I don't believe that would have much impact. That's, um, related more to, um, a concentration of a funding source, let's say, by one, uh, customer, possibly. So, that, you know, we'll talk about that and explore, see if that's any, any need for disclosure there. And then two years away, there's going to be a financial reporting model and capital asset standards that will need to be implemented. Uh, GATV projects, these are things that are in the future, in the pipeline, so they're just listed here, but I won't go into that. And that is our, uh, summary of the results of the audit. So, uh, you know, it was a, it's a tough audit, but we've got great, uh, cooperation from management and finance team. So, you know, thank you very much for that gets you back on, uh, track with the timing of your audits. And I can stop here for any questions or discussions.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Shelley, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so it's a long list of findings and repeated findings. So, um, on, on the repeated findings, where do we... Where do we go from here? Or is it a different meeting or, or conversation on where we go from here?
Yes, Commissioner. So, the, uh, what, we can see in the report and I can, you know, I can bring the report onto the screen. Uh, let me do that. Well, you know, all these findings are also in the report, and they all are, they all have a response from management. So, if you take a look, if you went down that list of findings, you would see at the, there's a caption there for management's response, or you know, called, you the responsible official, and explains on how are these going to be corrected, and the timeline, when they're going to be corrected. So, each finding has been addressed by management.
Do you, Commissioner, do you need a copy of that, so you can look at? Do you have one on?
We will get you one, please.
Okay. All right. I think that'll help me understand, understand what priorities are and so forth.
Could I respond just briefly, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, Mr. Veneer did allude to this. So, part of why we have so many repeated findings is because our previous year audit was so late. And we talked about this before the three of you came on, that we would see a bunch of repeated findings, because our audit was nearly a year late. So, we didn't have the opportunity to correct those. And so, once you see the responses, you'll see a lot of things that we have already resolved. And so, we have been working really hard to not have to put something like this in front of you again, because it's painful. But, and we're happy to sit and meet with you, once you've had a chance to review those, and let you know what our plans are, and how we intend to permanently resolve these.
Okay. Yep, thank you. I think that's valuable clarification, both for the new Commissioner, but also for public. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Thank you, sir, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item of the agenda, the Hila Regional Medical Center report. Mr. Whitaker, the CEO.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for letting me be here today. First of all, Commissioner Medina as well, thank you, and all the Commissioners, for the proclamation. It's wonderful to recognize our staff, our caregivers, and what they do. I support, support them and all that they do and their efforts. You know, I always say it's a, you know, I can't push the button on the CT or the lab machine, you know, bad things might happen if that, that occurred. And so, I'm here to support them and help them in what they do. And thank you for that recognition, very much. For the month of March, our admissions, we saw higher admissions in the month of March, about 15 higher than prior year, and we're about 30 admissions higher than, than last year, year-to-date. Deliveries are kind of right around the same number as last year. And swing bed admissions, we are admitting more swing bed admissions. And as we continue to grow that service line, we'll, we'll continue to see more, more utilization of that service. Surgeries, we were down 10 surgeries for the month, and 90 surgeries year-to-date. And that's generally in kind of the inpatient surgery areas, where we're seeing those, those lower numbers. We are seeing significantly higher ER visits, more people coming in and utilizing our services in the emergency room. We had 180 more visits in, in March than last year. 1607, that's, that's the highest month I've seen since, since I've been here in a year and a half. It was quite a busy month, and we're, in April, we saw a good number of folks as well. And we're about 500 ER visits over on year-to-date, higher than year-to-date. We continue to see growth and utilization of our outpatient services. So, again, that's like radiology lab, physical therapy, cancer center, and other areas. We had 500 and 50 more in the month of March compared to last year, and we're running about 2,000 visits higher than, than last year. And, you know, I appreciate our staff. It's a good recognition that people are utilizing, and we are seeing more people utilize our facility for services. You have the cancer center numbers there, as well as the clinics. The clinics were down in the month of March compared to last year, but over prior year, about 170 visits over prior year. And the growth is really in the primary care clinic, or our family medicine clinic, is where we're seeing the increases with that. And so, this, this translates to, in our financials for the month of March, about $900,000 more net revenue, our operating revenue, for the month of March, and about 6.6 million higher than, than year-to-date. Our operating expenses are, are higher than, than, than last year in the month of March. What, a few of the things, just to recognize, this year, we've brought on in terms of employment and what we do with, with staff, several physicians. So, Dr. Lamore, general surgeon, Dr. Leslie, a family medicine physician, Dr. Schutz, internal, our interventional radiologist came on, and we employ him, and he comes part-time in the month, as well as Dr. Windler came and joined our, our clinic and our staff, and we brought him on as well, and as well as Dr. Dorondo, who's an oncologist, physician, came on and employed with us. And so, but all of that translates into, to higher revenue as well. So, that's been, it's been good for us. Our surplus for the month of March, $550,000, and year-to-date, about 3.2 million is our operating surplus. And that is, and I talked about this briefly, but that, we exclude, and I've showed the numbers there of what those numbers are, but we, when we look at our surplus, I like to exclude the HDAA payments that we get, as well as the SB 161. And SB 161 was that $5.7 million that, that was kind of a bridge gap for two years. And then, the HDAA program is, is a new Medicaid provider assessment program. And so, you can see there with, with the net of those dollars and what that is year-to-date, we like to exclude those when we look at our numbers, so we see our operations and kind of how we're doing without those additional payments. But, some of the projects and things that are happening, MRI projects still underway. We're, we're still working through bids on construction parts, some shielding, there's a little bit of plumbing and flooring, and prices have come in just really high, and just, it's a tough pill to swallow. And so, we've reached out to a couple more companies to see what kind of bids we can get with that. But, we saw a bid up to $700,000, and it was just really a little higher than, than what we'd want, and what we thought it might come out to. So, we're going through that. Our ORH act project is still in process. I expect in the next couple months, we'll see some movement on that. We are moving forward, and Architect will be here this month to help redesign and work through our outpatient registration area, and fix that, and just make it just better for patients, medicare staff, and throughput as well. And we are in the middle of our nurse call system, and getting that replaced. Some of the projects that, that we've recently completed, our telephone project, telemetry project, and year-to-date, we've done about 3.2 million in capital spending, year-to-date. And when we close out some of these other ones, that'll, that'll go, we're already in the May, and we've got through June through our fiscal year. I think we'll probably be around 400, or 4 million with capital spending, which is a good, good healthy number in terms of reinvestment back into the facility. Just some, a few, a few things that are happening, projects. I mentioned previously that there is a new management company, necessarily isn't the right word, but like an advisory services company, Ovation Healthcare, they start June 1st. We did have a board training this week on Tuesday with them. It was about four hours long. We went through the, the three duties of a board member, duty of care, duty of loyalty, duty of obedience, went through some of the oversight things of board members and what, and what they do. And so, it was good training. We have a UNM site visits as part of building back the family medicine rural residency program. We do have a, a kind of a dinner Monday evening at the hospital in our courtyard. Commissioners, if you'd like to attend that and meet, meet the individuals, let me know, and that way I can just mark you down, and you can be there as part of that kind of reception dinner with that. We have our GRMC employing family picnic. This is going to be a great time, it's July 12th, and we're really looking forward to that, as well as all the events coming up with Hospital Week. I am kind of looking at dates for GRMC Town Hall this summer, and just as an update, just go through things that are happening with the facility, things that are changing, and just variety stuff. Probably talked a lot about management company again, and what that means, and as well as what does it mean to be a critical access hospital. I still get a lot of questions from time to time about, about that, what that means. And we, we've recently kind of formalized our kind of, the things we do and community help, and sponsorships, and things we do under Hila Regional Medical Center Cares Program. And it's exciting to see kind of that formalization come about. And part of that is what we do with our cafeteria sales. We give a percent of our cafeteria sales, and we, we identify a local not-for-profit that kind of has somewhat of a health and wellness type of mission in mind. And so, we, we do, we have the commons as our first quarter recipient, and SaaS, the Silver Regional Sexual Assault Support Services is our first group for quarter two. And so, the SAP, at 11:30 today, we are presenting a $2,500 check to the commons as part of that, again, that portion from our cafe sales for that. Commissioners, that's my, that's my report. I stand for your questions.
Commissioners, questions? Thank you, appreciate what you're doing. I can see things getting a lot better. I guess, I noticed where there was 128 days cash, 148, I think I saw the numbers. So I'm assuming that that's going down, because some of this money's going into Hila Regional?
Yes, sir, that is correct. If, and again, that's, that's, we exclude our kind of longer-term investments. So, we have dollars that are in CDs, as well as in New Mexico, the local government investment pool, I think is what it's called. So, in total, right now, we have almost $12 million set aside for those, for those things. And those dollars are excluded from this as well. So, yes, it's, we've been hovering, when you exclude those dollars, and we look at our operating cash, we've been right around the 125 to 130 mark, and, as we've continued to do our capital projects, as well as put dollars back into our staff with salary increases and increases to benefits.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. And, you know, that's been discussed for a year, two years, and I appreciate what you're doing. So, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Moving on to elected official reports. Madam Clerk, do you have a report? Sheriff, do you have a report?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I just wanted to report our statistics for the month of April. Total complaints, calls for service that we had inclusive with self-initiated was 1,650. Complaints that were, that we, some of the calls that we had were 25 alarm calls, 35 domestic violence calls. We had a total of 35 accidents with no injuries, and 23 accidents with injuries, for a total of 58 traffic crashes that we investigated in the month of April. We did have 13 criminal damage to property calls, 62 animal calls, 38 on one at subject, 40, correction, 39 suspicious activity calls. In regards to the fireworks complaints that you requested, Mr. Chairman, for the month of March and April up to today, we've had five total calls of fireworks complaints. And the majority, and this is inclusive of the county, not just, it includes the city the, and the municipalities. So, that's pretty low for now, but as, as it gets closer to the 4th, we're, we're going to start getting a lot more of those calls. For the, for the year of 2024, we had a total of 71 calls for fireworks, and that's usually during the 4th of July, and then the New Year's Eve. That's why the, the numbers jump up. A call, case of interest, we had an incident that happened on April the 26th in, in the Fayetteville Hot Springs. We had an individual that was found unresponsive in the pond, in the actual spring, and, but that was determined to have been medical. There was no signs of foul play, and the medical investigator was also called out to the scene. So, that's pretty much what we had, that I wanted to report. In regards to my civil process division, we had a total of 11 round trip transports to prisons and jails that we do transport for, for a total of 6,527 miles. And we served approximately 380 documents, which include subpoenas and summons and RITs. That's with my civil process division. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report unless you have any. Well, actually, I do have something that I did want to bring up, and that's in regards to my training. In the month of April, all of my supervisors were required to attend an effective employee discipline training that was put on by the state, by the NMC. And so, all my supervisors are, were put through that training, and that training was very crucial for us to be able to understand the importance of addressing issues that come up, that they encounter. So, I'm thankful for Mr. Mark Allen for putting that training on for all of us. Also, we are, in this month of, of May, I have several individuals that are going to be attending the basic CIT training. The Sheriff's Office is sponsoring this class with the, I can't remember the name of the company that's going to come down and do the training for us, but we are inviting all municipalities and any law enforcement agencies throughout the Southwest that, that could utilize this basic CIT training. This is a 40-hour class that addresses basic verbal de-escalation skills designed for sworn law enforcement officers. Class participants will gain knowledge regarding crisis and how to, how people respond or behave in crisis. Another thing that we are going to be participating, that I have staff participating in, is going to be Blue Bridge Autism Instructor. I'm going to have two of my staff members go to that instructor class. And this training, the attendees will receive meaningful actionable and critical autism response instructor training. So, that's something that we'll be able to provide to our staff, so that they understand when they're dealing with people that have those type of disabilities, that we're able to respond to them. The staff will be trained on that. I also have several of my staff members that will be receiving training on room clearing, close quarters training, and more, at a more tactical level, so that they're more, and more better prepared and trained. I also did want to report to you guys that we have, here within the last seven months, eight months, we've been working on our, updating our policy, policies. And we have graciously, the New Mexico counties has also provided this, where we have re-implemented, not re-implemented, but redone our policies through Lexi Pool, which has been a great organization that we've been working with. And it's been, it's been a long process, but we finally got all of them done. We have a total of 152 policies that we've got through that policy manual. And so, we just finished that last month, and I have sent it out to all my staff, and they have all been instructed to review it and acknowledge that they understand these new policies. And a lot of them are policies that we already had in place, they've just been updated. The good thing with this Lexi Pool is that any updates that come up that legislature puts out during The good thing with this Lexi Pool is that any updates that come up that legislature puts out during legislative session, they send out the updates, they update the policy. So it's very beneficial to us to keep up to date with what's going on. So my staff is currently reviewing them, and there's a lot, so it's going to take a little bit to get them. But as soon as there's, I have a date set for the implementation of this new policy manual, and it's going to be a real benefit to us to understand what, what is out there for us and how to, how to follow these policies. But other than that, I just want to thank my staff for what they do day in and day out. We have been fairly busy, summer coming up, so it's going to get a little bit busier for us. But I stand for any questions, and I do encourage the public, if they have any questions or concerns about my office, they're more than welcome to come in and visit with me. I'd be happy to visit with them and go over whatever issues or concerns they have.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
That's it, right, elected officials? Moving on to next item is the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with a note that on April 8th, 2025 work session, April 10th, regular meeting minutes or session, there was two executive session on each one of them. No items were discussed other than that was on the agenda, no action was taken.
Second.
So second by Commissioner Stevens. Any discussion or anything, Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to new business, item K, be the purchase of a transit bus. This would be for Corte Caminos for three, and it'd be $396,045.
Make a motion, please, sir.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Shally, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Under item M, purchase of a minivan, also for Corte Caminos for less price of $86,101.
Move to approve.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Shally, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item M, donation of transportation van to Fort Beard Medical Center, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I was second by Commissioner Medina, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then item N, do we have any discussion for the preliminary budget?
Do you have anything? Good morning, Chairman Commissioners, we're still building our FY '26 budget. I have updated some of the spreadsheets that we spoke about on Tuesday. We can run through real quickly and if you have any questions. But again, we're still updating like our capital projects and our grants and things like that. So when you're in ClearGov, you'll still see those things are being updated. Can you flag that? And what we'll do is, any feedback that you have to maybe this helpful or anything that we throw through ClearGov, questions that come up, please don't hesitate to call Andrea or myself or schedule a meeting. And I know the chairman asked for what budgets were flat, so we'll try to provide that information. But we're continuing to build this up, and as soon as we have it complete, we'll send it out to you well in advance of the meeting on the 24th for when we'll ask for your approval. That's about it for now.
No motion, we just have it on for this question?
I do have a packet for you, but I couldn't. Anyway, I do have it ready for after the meeting, if you want to stop by my office, the paper form. But I mostly have just entered in our, our current cash balances. Again, this fluctuates day to day, an A P paying one payment makes your cash balances fluctuate every day. And this will change all the way through the end of the budget season until our fiscal year end closes. Some of the estimated, these are still estimated budgeted revenues that you can see here on, within our funds. We have our environmental G R T and county property valuations, our E M S, our dispatch. So you're, I can send this to you after the meeting as well. We, very early numbers, but our G R Ts are estimated to be much higher than previous years. So the estimation you hear, see here on our G R Ts is based on our current activity of what we project to come up next year. So where you see transfers, again, budgeted transfers, those are for funds that cannot generate revenues on their own. Therefore, we have to supplement those funds with budget transfers from the general fund. If you have any questions, let me know, I'd be glad to.
Thank you, I, I am able to get into ClearGov and we'll, we'll look at it further and reach out if I have more questions. With the county road budget that's highlighted there and the budgeted expenditures, just to make sure I understand, so it's like 2.8 million. That means that for the fiscal year, that's what we anticipate to spend on that line item, on county roads, is that right? Okay.
But that also includes salaries and benefits for the road fund department.
Okay.
Employees.
Everything, yeah. So when constituents ask about expensive upgrades that would be millions of dollars, it's, it's not, it's true to say we just don't have the budget for that, right? We have to, we have to spread out that money equitably. Yeah.
County manager, you have anything to say?
Yeah, so like Andrea said, so the road fund, that's everything operational for the road fund from salaries and benefits, operational expenses, fuel, daily projects. Yeah, so everything that takes to operate the road fund. So yes, whenever you have a constituent that asks for a $4 million project, we don't have $4 million in our road fund.
Right.
So, I mean, everything that you do right there, 2.8 million, is that correct? That sounds a little, but I mean, we're at where we're at.
Actually, that's a little higher than it's been in the past. And you're probably going to continue to see that grow because we have not budgeted anything outside of, you know, less than $100,000 a year outside of our L D R F projects to keep up with roads. Our roads are falling apart, and we have got to start doing more with our own dollars to make sure that we can stay ahead of some of those. So it's a little higher than normal. And I'm going to keep coming back to you and ask you to continue to invest in our road network. I mean, that's one of our main priorities, and we need to do a better job.
Does that include the chip ceiling and all that to you?
No. Well, we do have one capital project in there, Jason mentioned it in his presentation. It is a pavement preservation to finish out Bill Evans Lake Road, not necessarily chip seal. Those projects are local government road fund, that's in a different fund. And that is where, this is a 75, 25% match from the state, and you approve those projects every year. Typically, we do do a lot of chip seal with those. There are other things we can do with it, it doesn't always have to be chip seal.
Okay, well, thank you.
And I am still working with Michelle on salaries, looking at what an appropriate increase would be. We, we do have a few employees after our last market analysis that have fallen below the minimum. So we will need to bring, we have to bring everybody up to the minimum to make sure that they're on the compensation plan. And then looking at a percentage increase across the board. So still calculating those figures, and I think it's something that we can afford to do and continue to, continue to invest in our employees and make sure that we're not continuing to fall behind with moving them through that compensation plan. Still, I thought I would have it done yesterday, but a day didn't go as planned.
No, that's fine, I just, you know, money is tight, and I just hope that the employees understand that they're getting a great benefit by getting their 100% of their insurance paid and that they work with us. And it's not that we don't want to, you know, give them more, but at the end of the day, we pay a lot of money to make sure that they are covered under the health insurance and that's getting paid because it's really expensive. So I hope that they really look at that.
I'm glad you brought that up because we're estimating, our estimated projections for that benefit is $4 million. And the other thing that the employees need to understand is those premiums went up 10%. They're probably going to go up again, and they don't see that. We take the brunt of that, and, and so that's a raise within itself, and it's just unfortunate that not everyone understands that.
Well, you know, and I see it, I mean, since I've been sitting up here, I see that going up anywhere from 10 to 13% every year. And we take a hit on that. I really appreciate your staff though, too, I think all of us got one is we broke down our benefits and it showed that, and I hope that the employees take time to look at it because it's real easy to come in here and see that. But if this commission were to turn around and say, hey, we're going to go ahead and drop the, to give you more money, 75 to 25 insurance, they're going to see that they're going to lose money because they don't, some employees don't understand the cost of us burying 100% of the insurance. I hope they really looked at it and they studied it, so I appreciate you guys doing that and your staff. I know mine came out from Brides, so tell them thank you, I don't know who else was involved. Thanks, I appreciate that. Anything else, Commissioners, on this? Andrea or you? Okay, well, we'll keep looking at it, don't stress yourself out. You got time, if your computer's not working, mine, even when it works, it doesn't work, so I'm good with it. So, we good on that one? Okay, moving on to agreements, mutual aid agreement for Grant County and Luna County. Can you refresh my memory on this one? What was this about?
This is a mutual aid agreement between Grant and Luna County for mutual response with fire. This is nearly verbatim, it's the one you approved between Grant and Sierra. However, Luna County's E M S is private, so there was not E M S contained in this. So we're just trying, Scott's been doing a really good job of reaching out to our neighboring counties and partners and getting these updated, so things, he's worked hard on these.
Thank you. Do you have a motion, Commissioners?
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to resolution, under item P, resolution R dash 25 dash 30, it's a budget adjustment request?
This is the budget request from Tuesday. This includes the $15,258 for the emergency funding for the Mimbres Center to have a new stove from Long Term Aging and Services. And the correction of the $80,000 increase of the E W P P grant that I previously put the full grant, but I, this is corrected now. Should have been in your packets with the $80,000 increase. And then the new airport grant that you approved last month for the pavement of the parking lot. And, I stand for any questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Motion?
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Shally. Any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next resolution is R dash 25 dash 31, and this, this resolution is to accept the F Y 24 audit findings. Do you have anything to say, Ms. Montoya?
I would just like to say that we've come a long way in a year, and I know it looks a little shocking to the new Commissioners, but in all in all, we have come so far, and many of these findings are, are already corrected, and we're very close to almost having no findings starting in the next fiscal year. So I know it seems alarming and because you weren't here two years ago, and then last year when this came down. But I would, we have to have the approval for the rules, and that's part of the law. Your consideration and approval would be appreciated.
You know, the only thing I have to say is, you know, we have three new Commissioners here, with me and Commissioner Medina sat up here with, with this, and I know that, and you've heard it when you came on, and our staff has been real, working really hard, putting in different systems, putting in different thinking policies, right? Working on policies to get this corrected. There for a while, we assumed we were doing what we were supposed to be doing, but we ended up seeing certain things in our staff and our county manager, and they started working really hard on that. And I know when you look at this and you look at that sheet, you know, you have all these findings. You know, biggest thing to look at is look at the, where it says resolved, and look at, you know, and our county manager's going to get that to you guys, how it was resolved, what they're doing and all the work that they've put into this. I really appreciate you, Commissioner, being patient, and we thank our, our staff there, our finance department, all the work they've done on it to, to make us better. And hopefully from here forward, we, we look a lot better, and I thank you guys, I appreciate that. So do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
So a motion to approve by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Shally, do we have any discussion, further discussion, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Floyd, is the other reporter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, I do have a few items. I want to report to the Commission that I met with some folks at Dos Griegos here recently, and we're in the process of setting up just a community meeting with everybody up there in the area, just to see what their requests are, what their, their needs are, their concerns. But I know one concern in particular that I think we should address as a county or the road department is the right-ofways up there in that general area. I think they need to be cleared a little bit, they are a little brushy on the side of the road, especially for the wildfire mitigation. If we can get somebody up there just to look at it, take some of that, those weeds off the right-of-way in North Swan Street, all within that area, it would be greatly appreciated. Also, I've continued our talks with P and M, and I recently spoke to, to the representative, I'm speaking to Kevin, and we are finally in the process of setting a firm date to meet with folks in the Cliff and Healer area regarding the recent outages. That way, it's going to be a true town hall meeting where people can come and express their, their concerns, get their questions answered. P and M will have representatives there to explain how the wildfire mitigation works, how the system works. I know a lot of it, it's an antiquated system, but I, I've been briefed on it, but I think the folks there need to be briefed the same as I am, because I understand it very well now. We are setting a meeting date for the 28th to 29th, there's going to be two different meetings. One's going to be, we have it tentatively planned at the Cliff High School. The county manager's working with Superintendent Mr. Hopkins to get that scheduled. Because obviously, there's room for a lot of folks, there's a sound system, a lot of people can attend, hopefully we can get that taken care of. Regardless, there will be a meeting, hopefully it's at Cliff High School. There'll be another second meeting here in Silver City. And I think folks in, in your district, Commissioner Medina, Mimbres, and everybody else, I know there's some issues out there as well. Maybe they can come in and, and visit and ask the questions as well. That's going to be, again, on the 28th, 29th, I'll have a firm date, or Mrs. Chardine Webb will have one here pretty quick. We're both in conversation with, with P and M. So that, that issue has not gone on for with P and M, so that, that issue has not gone unforgotten. Another issue that has been brought up to me is the tennis courts in Cliff. I know those folks are, are looking forward to using those fo- uh, tennis courts, especially for their recreational activities such as pickleball and tennis, other things. I brought this up, you know, it's been a couple months ago and, um, I just wonder where, where we're at, I did speak to, to the county manager, but she's gonna look into it and, um, if I could, uh, Charlene, maybe get a, an update. I, once a week and every Friday, if you could shoot me an email or a text and that way I have a response to those folks, because I, I just don't want folks to think, they bring up, uh, an issue, we talk about it, I talk about it and then it's forgotten. I, I, I look to them to give me an update and then I, I'm their voice up here as a commission, so, um, I'm, I'll get an update and I know Charlene's gonna work on it. She's briefed me on, um, the Heela, uh, Community Center, that's a big issue. I, I know those folks need that for the library, telehealth, I keep bringing that up, that's one of my main priorities. Charlene, again, has, has briefed me on it, they are consistently working on it, is gonna take some funding from the state legislature, so this is a, gonna be a, sort of a little bit of a process, but we, I have not forgot about that, that community hall. Also, maybe if you can give me the same update on the right of way up there with the Dos Griegos folks, if you can give me a, an update on the fire department as well. And, um, you don't have to give it now, but you, you could just brief me on it later just, 'cause I haven't forgot about that as well. Also, um, just to, I saved this one for last, uh, Mr. Chair, and if you could just bear with me for a couple more minutes, please. I, I, um, recently I, I talked to somebody because when, when you have the health issues I do and you meet with other folks that have the same issues, you sort of have that, that mutual, uh, respect for each other, knowing what everybody, we, we all went through. And I recently spoke to somebody and he told me a very interesting and wonderful story and he said, um, basically he's running a, a short five K and, um, at the end of it, he, he collapsed, um, had a heart attack and, uh, he was basically, um, survived the heart attack and it was one of those severe heart attacks, I think they call the, this type of a heart attack or the reading on a monitor, the widow maker. And they, they had told him, we're warning the few people to survive the widow maker. And the reason he, he, he survived it because the, the doctors told him that when he collapsed, he fell at the foot of an angel. I didn't understand that, but when he told me the story, it made sense because he was running and he said luckily, um, there was a nurse running behind him with, with her son and thankfully the son wasn't as fast as this, this gentleman, this friend of mine. So, when he collapsed, the nurse was right there and she administered CPR and basically saved his life. Well, I'm, I'm very proud and humbled to say that we, we have an angel sitting here amongst us today. And, um, I heard this story a couple, two or three meetings ago where an employee collapsed and, uh, when she collapsed, the, the individual here recognized what it was immediately, uh, did the appropriate, his training kicked in, made the appropriate calls, the moves, uh, uh, everything to, to really bring this person and, and possibly save her life, but I guarantee you, she went to fall at the foot of an angel, it would've probably been a different story. And I'd like to recognize Commissioner Eloy Medina for doing that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And that's those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know, just to let you know a little bit, here soon, I'm not sure, probably close to August, maybe before, we have to look at our ICIP.
Joseph and I are working on that now, we're in the process of scheduling dates for public hearings, we try to have a public hearing here in Silver City, one in the Cliff area, also in the Mimbres area. We like to try to do it in conjunction with one of your quarterly meetings, I think that would be good. It is due in August this year, so we will, um, also work with staff, um, on what their priorities would be as well as community needs and anything that you have in your districts, I know you've had some conversations, um, with your constituents, those are the sort of items that we need to place on our ICIP. And Commissioner Flores also has, um, some projects that have been brought out of his district, so any capital project needs that you have, this is a time we need to be able to place it on there. If we don't get these on there, then it doesn't give you a, um, opportunity to prioritize what you feel our needs are moving forward. All we can do is make our recommendations of staff and provide those that we, um, solicit from the community, but you are the one that sets those priorities. And so, we're working on that, we'll have it to you well in advance for you to study and provide input and then we have to submit it in August.
So, and the reason I bring, I brought that up is, you know, because Commissioner Flores can, can look at some of the stuff and I know Commissioner Flores mentioned it in our, one of our meetings, uh, this year we didn't do very well. I'm not talking as Grant County as a whole, but our entity with our, our money coming from the state, um, so, uh, maybe we need to take a, a good look at our ICIP thing and, and, and start some of these conversations. I know there's other things that are on the horizon that are really important also that, uh, we need to look at, but, uh, just keep that in mind, whatever projects you have, you know, we can mess around with the list, discuss it and, and see what, what some of your priorities are. Commissioner Medina?
Yeah, just a few. Um, Commissioner Flores, thank you for that. On the power outages, please keep me informed, 'cause I would really like to make sure the members people are aware so they can attend. With that being said, um, we have a, we have a, one of our quarterly meetings, May twenty-first up in the Mimbres Valley, I'm taking the sheriff and I believe Scott's gonna go and Roger Groves and a few others, we're gonna be taking a lot of people up there with this go around which should be really good for the, for the residents. Um, that's May twenty-first at eleven-thirty at the senior center there in Mimbres. I have been receiving a lot of phone calls regarding senior services in the Mimbres. I wanna tell Charlene thank you, 'cause I'm having to call her almost every day and tell, give me an update on what to say and how to say it, so we're doing it fully correctly. But it's rough when, when a rumor gets started out there, how fast it spreads like a wildfire. They put a spin on everything that they hear and, um, we've been able to get to the right people and start expressing how we're not gonna let senior services go down and, and how we're involved in taking care of this and so forth, so, so I just want the residents to understand that we're working, you know, behind the scenes and that we're making sure that everything's taken care of. And Charlene, I just want to thank you for your, for your approach to that, I know you're working hard on it and making phone calls and stuff, I do appreciate that very much. Last thing, Sheriff, you know, I'd like to recognize people when, when you see them in a different capacity. Anthony Becomo, um, serves his church very well in a different capacity and it's odd when you see him daily in uniform, carrying a gun and then you go to church and he's, he's an usher. That's really, that, that, that shows how you serve your community in every aspect, not just, um, as a police officer, but he goes out and, uh, there's some days, 'cause I, I, I've told my wife, it looks like Anthony's running for office, 'cause he literally goes down every pima, shakes everybody's hand and, and that, that's a good thing, that, that's good communication with the public and I just wanted to extend that and just tell them thank you for that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Shally.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick question, when you mentioned the ICIP, did I understand that it's a town hall to get feedback on that or?
Well, usually what happens is we have to have, uh, uh, public input from, from people as to what they want and what they're looking at, but go ahead.
It's a requirement, the state expects us to host, um, a public input session for the Infra- it's Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. We're only required to have one, um, we try to host three and so, um, one on the Mimbres one in the Heela Cliff area and then one here to represent the three of your districts and, um, that's just to solicit the public input and it's a requirement.
Okay. And when do, when do we think that would happen?
Joseph and I are working on trying to pick dates that makes sense and that works with his calendar, my calendar and obviously yours as well. Hopefully, we, we try to schedule those when you could be present as well, so we'll have some dates, probably next week.
All right, thank you. Other than that, I appreciate the, I've been getting, I've mentioned it before, most of the calls I get are about, uh, junk properties and, and code enforcement and lately, anyway. And, um, so I've been appreciative of helping us look at those ordinances. I've noticed Commissioner Stevens is making comments on, uh, those, they're on a Google Drive to make it easy for us to look at, so I appreciate that. I've been looking at those quite closely and talking to residents about, uh, their concerns and what the ordinances say and I appreciate Mr. Fuller and, and Lilian for spending time to teach me and let me know what's going on there as well. So, um, anyway, I look forward to looking at those and seeing if there's improvements or so forth that we need to do. And also, again, appreciate the sheriff and his deputies and team, uh, all the work they do on drug interdiction and, and efforts to, for our community safety and the time that they've dedicated to meet with people in the community and myself included, so appreciate that. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Stevens.
Uh, yes, thank you, I just wanna, um, piggyback on what Commissioner Shally just said, that I, I appreciate, uh, Sheriff, your, your team's investment in training. I think that's, it's really important to, uh, invest in your people and it will pay off. And then, um, also, thank you Commissioner Flores for your heartfelt comments about the, the medical situations that you've gone through and, uh, thank you Commissioner Medina for initiating those proclamations. I think it underscores the importance of, uh, healthcare providers in our community and, and also law enforcement. I mean, there is, I believe there is no small job, everyone's job is important, um, but I think with law enforcement and healthcare, uh, we're at our most vulnerable when we need those services and so that's why, um, it really strikes a chord. Uh, so, then that makes me think about the, the public comments that were shared on Tuesday, um, about the challenges facing the community right now because one of our biggest healthcare providers, HMS, has recently lost their chief medical officer and their chief mental health officer. Uh, so, that's concerning. I know there have also been, um, reports of high turnover among the medical staff there. So, I, in looking at our role, uh, former Commissioner Edwards mentioned Tuesday that, uh, you know, the two questions are why the high turnover and what can be done about it. So, um, I would like to ask our county attorney and manager to work on some possible, um, actions that we could take at the next meeting and add that to an agenda, whether that be a meeting or a letter, uh, but, but somehow for us to, uh, help be part of the solution with that situation. I think also with Heela Regional Medical Center, um, Commissioner Ponse or Chairman Ponse mentioned that we've seen, uh, a lot of progress in terms of their financial picture, but also, uh, their responsiveness to the community and I think part of that is shining a light on some of the concerns and we all know that, that transparency and accountability are good, but it's another example of how if you just keep chipping away at things and you shine a light on the problem, it will get better. So, that's my hope for HMS too. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. So, I just wanna, I, I appreciate what you said, Commissioner Stevens. I agree with, with, with what you said. You know, things we have to look at is we, we do have some contracts with HMS and, and I think seeing what was out there in, in public, in the letter that was out there, and I'm not gonna get into that, people can read it themselves. You know, I think that we as a county, just because of having contracts with, uh, HMS, that it is not only that, but I think it, it is, uh, part, partly because of the citizens it serves and, and what needs to be done. I think that as Grant County Commissioners, and I said it last time, I mean, I have questions on, on some of the figures I gave, I think that it is time that, that we do look at that and I appreciate you and, and I support you telling our, our county manager and our, uh, our attorney to see what we can come up with to start addressing that. It's, it's not so much about H, HMS, to me, it's, it's a lot about our public, what, what's happening. I think we do as commissioners have some responsibility to our, to our county, we also have responsibility to our contracts. You know, the biggest thing that hurts me and, and, uh, I keep saying it, I'm not gonna get into, is our senior centers, the work it's putting us through and what we have to do to continue the, the services and I shouldn't say the work, the work it's putting our staff through, so I appreciate what you said. If you commissioners haven't seen that letter, read it, you know, it's out there, read it, look at it and I think that we should, uh, look at possibly something similar and, and moving forward, because this is about our community. And, uh, I appreciate everything that, uh, you know, being said and I guess same thing, uh, to you too, that, that I support Commissioner Stevens and, uh, let's see what we can come up with and we'll keep in touch and we'll go from there. I don't know, I'm like you, I don't know if our meeting's a twenty-fourth, twenty-second, but it doesn't matter. I'll, I'll look on my fridge, it has it there, but, uh, maybe we can come up with something by then and, and see what our commission, uh, decides on what direction we need to go, so, thank you. Twenty-second? So, thank you guys and, uh, that's it for me. Anything else, any, what, anybody forgot, county manager, anything? Nothing? Thank you guys. So, this meeting is adjourned.